Good afternoon, colleagues. We've returned from our recess. We had lunch for about less than an hour. We're back to... We're still on Bill 374 and 375. And we have a representative from the Department of Public Health that will generally give us a brief of what's going on out there and tell us what to anticipate in reference to the two bills. I'd ask Senator Amanda if you want to ask the gentleman. And if you can, please, sir, identify yourself and your position at Public Health so we'll know who you are.
My name is Chima Ambakwe.
You can bring your mask down so we can hear you better. There you go. Good. Okay, go for it.
My name is Chima Ambakwe. I work at Public Health. I... My name is Chima Ambakwe. I work at Public Health. For the response, I am the Containment Lead, which includes infection control, isolation, and quarantine. And my everyday job at Public Health is I'm the Program Manager for Tuberculosis and Hancin Disease.
All right. Thank you. And I'll ask Senator Amanda Sheldon if she has any questions for the Public Health Representative.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Mr. Chima?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Chima, thank you for being here today. I appreciate it. Earlier this morning before the lunch break, the Guam Election Commission shared with us what the protocols were that they used during the special election for Jotniya, which included, you know, hand washing stations, hand sanitizer, face masks, all of these different precautions taken to prevent the spread of the coronavirus during that special election. In your expert opinion, do you believe that we will be able to have a safe election if people were to go to the polls as early as August 29th for the primary election if we have all of these same precautions in place?
It's going to be a yes and no answer, depending on the number of cases we have at that point. Because for planning a large gathering, there are readiness and planning tools that we can use on the island to plan an election. But it will all be dependent on the number of cases we have. One good thing is that if for large events that you have people coming from the same environment or the same community, it's safer because looking at their numbers at that time will be able to help you in the planning. So I would say our numbers will determine and the kind of infection control protocols we have in place.
At this point, with the numbers that we have right now, what would you say if the election were to be held this weekend with our current numbers?
So we have to look at a few issues here. First of all is the number of cases as against the number of testing. And we also have to look at the relationship of the cases, if they are clusters. You know, what happens is if we're having a community spread where we're seeing a high number of cases from different communities in different areas in our community, then it will be an issue of concern. But if we are looking at cases that are clusters where you have, let's say, one family member who is infected and you do a contact investigation and identify the close contacts from that family, and even if they're up to 15 or 20 from that family, it will be considered a cluster and would not trigger a lot of panic considering the fact that it is one unit than looking at it from the fact that it is spread across the community. So these are issues that Public Health would need to sit back and look at each individual case to identify who, when, and where they were infected to make that determination.
Okay. And if you were to give advice to the Guam Election Commission if they were still to hold this election, is there any additional precaution or a measure that they should implement to make the voting process even safer than what they've already practiced in the last special election? Is there more that we can do?
I think it will rely on the numbers that will be involved. So for planning large events, like I said, there are readiness and planning tools that you can use to determine based on numbers. If we're going to have 500, 1,000, 2,000 people, that will help you plan for that particular event. But what is important is the focus on reducing and limiting contact between individuals in that area. So there has to be a lot of planning put in place for that. It can happen, but we need to sit down and see, understand what they want to do, and then Public Health will give guidance on what we think should be the appropriate recommendations for such large gatherings. It's possible, but it will involve a lot of work.
So when the Jotniya special election was held, was there any consultation from the Guam Election Commission with Public Health? Did you advise them at that time?
I cannot answer to that because I was not properly... I was not directly consulted, but maybe my leadership can answer that.
Okay. I hope that was the case in that if we have any election moving forward, whether it be a primary or not in August, that of course your services will be used to ensure that we have the safest election possible. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And thank you for your time, Mr. Chima. Very nice to see you.
Thank you, Senator Amanda. Senator Jim, do you have any questions on the Public Health Representative?
None at this time.
Senator Therese, do you have any questions, ma'am, you want to ask?
Chima, what is the, I guess, existing authorization for large gatherings or group events as you described them? What did you call them? Large events?
Large events, yeah.
Would you describe an election as a large event? Or is that limited because they're going in one by one?
So it depends on the kind of election. Like, I might say for primary elections that involve only party members, what I would have to understand or what recommendations I would have to make is to understand the process. You know, how, where the election is going to be held? Is it going to be in an open air or is it going to be in a closed environment? The number of estimated participants, that is key to making that determination. Because what can happen with your question is if we look at the numbers and determine that the area coverage might be too small for that large group, we might decide to use the online approach where we can have two sections where people can vote online and people can physically come to vote.
All right. Let me just describe what we think the process is going to be. We think online is out of the question at this point, that we could not implement that in time. So the scenario we're looking at are 22 polling sites. That's 22 schools normally where people are going to go to vote. And they're going to divide those 22 polling sites into 67 precincts, meaning one school might have three precincts. And we used to all have the three precincts in the cafeteria. Now they're going to divide them into three different classrooms or three different locations. But these are all internal... These are all rooms covered, aircon, everything. And they're expecting, you know, and voters go in one by one or two by two. And then they... In Jotniya, they had four booths in one classroom so we could go in four at a time, separate booths. But they're expecting, I think they said island-wide... I don't know if I heard this correct, Mr. Chair, 33,000 people? That's, you know, that's an island-wide election. It's not divided by party or anything. Everybody on the island is supposed to... All registered voters are supposed to go in and vote. In 67 different precincts? And that's about what I know right now. 55,000 registered voters. I think they're expecting about 33,000 divided by 67 precincts.
Okay. If you have attended some of our outreaches and you could see how we structured the outreaches?
Yes.
What I can suggest at this point is to look at other options of like doing a drive-by voting. Having sections... So normally what you do in the main election, like registration, and then you go to the polling booth and then you write in and then vote. We can actually look at how to turn that and use more of a contained environment by maybe using a drive-by system where people can drive in and have the booth on the outside and limit contact. So if you're coming to vote, rather than line up, if it's possible considering the number of people in that person, they can line up in their cars. And then when it's time to vote, one individual goes in to the booth, you know, when all the paperwork is done in the car, which because what I'm trying to do is limit the time of exposure between the individual who is actually conducting the election and the actual voter. So by doing that, what we can achieve is containing the virus or making sure that people are contained in their vehicle. Or we can do the same working system that we do during the outreaches where we have people lined up in the six-foot markings and then have them go in one at a time to vote. I think it's workable, but it's going to involve a lot of logistics and also a lot of personal responsibility on the side of the individuals who are coming to vote. Because even if we have those engineering controls in place, if we have individuals who do not adhere to the laid-down infection control protocols we put in place, we also would actually put people in danger.
All right. Have you ever seen an election here? You know, it's different in every village, but like I very much remember Gigo and Mr. Chair. You're from Gigo, so you're better to describe it. But at the end of the night or, you know, the time to vote, the lines are long, everybody's coming from work. I mean, there's a lot of people there at one time, maybe more than throughout the day. But yeah, so if we all line up our lines, it would be like Revantax. We're going to line up and we're going to be outside. I don't know. Okay. I am very interested if anyone at Public Health has been consulting on this. And I know that the Election Commission Chair has said, you know, they want to implement recommended policies. And I think they're following, you know, national election commission guidelines or suggestions or recommendations. But yes, with your experience with the testing here on Guam, you know, those large events, I would call those definitely large events.
Yes, ma'am.
Now I'm imagining, yeah, people lining up for those hours that they said... They've claimed they've lined up for hours to get that done. But that's always been... Okay. Well, Mr. Chair, very hard to know. We're trying to make a decision whether it's, you know, safe to hold an election at the end of August, which is about four more weeks, right? End of August. And/or to either cancel that primary and go straight to a general or to narrow it down to only the primaries that are contested. But that would still, you know, reach out to several villages or that would actually reach out to every village if we're going to limit it to those that are contested. It's still every village. It's still every voter, I think. Mr. Chair, is that correct? So...
I think, ma'am, the challenge would be not on the planning, but on the side of the...
Not on the what? Sorry?
Not on the planning.
Okay.
Because we have tools that can help us plan. But it's about the individuals who are going to be involved. There has to be a lot of education and a lot of education for the voters. Because like I always say, if you have those engineering controls in place, it depends on the individuals to either adhere to it or not. And going to have an election in four weeks, I think the Electoral Commission can sit down with Public Health and one more time, you know, go through what their plans are and then look at how feasible it is to have a plan. I think it's something that we need, both parties need to sit down and really cross the Ts and dot the Is to be on the same page. Because Public Health recommendation at the end of the day would be safety first for the island than just having an election. So I think we can sit one more time with them and then trash out the issues.
Well, yes. Regardless of what we do on these bills that are right before us regarding the primary, we need to have a safe general election. We can't not have one of those. So we have to plan that. And that's what my understanding with Election Commission is that's what they say too. The more time they are given, the better plan that they can come up with. Can you just give us an idea? When you had the public health testing, some people have lined up for hours to get tested when the lines are long in those big events. But how many drive-through stations were there? Was it just one?
No.
Was it? Yeah, well, how many?
No. Sometimes we have up to four stations.
Okay.
Yes.
So even when you're processing up to four stations, still might take hours for that many people who have gone through. What is the largest event or largest number of people that went through with four stations, may I ask?
Like, I think we got up to, I think sometimes 500 on the average.
Okay. In a matter of four hours?
Sometimes we can push it to five hours depending.
Okay.
I think what would be important is to cut off most of the wait time. You know, we're going to look at the process and find out what portions of the process that can be cut off to reduce time spent in those large groups. Like issues of registration, if registration can be done in a different manner so that people can only just walk in and vote and walk away. That way, you're going to reduce time. Because for the virus, what we're more interested in is the large gathering of people and time spent together. So if we have limited time together, then that will be limited time for transmission to occur.
Yes. So there are lines going in and on the way out, there are parties. The funnest part. But I just want to, you know, once again, if you can find who at Public Health had consulted with the Election Commission for the Jotniya elections, we really want to know. And we want to know, yeah, what their proposal was or what, you know... And based on your experience with these testing sites, what your best recommendations would be. But we kind of need to know by tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Senator Tello, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for the opportunity. And Chima, right?
Yes.
Hi, nice to meet you. Chima, so I actually was told that the director was going to be here of Public Health. Is there a reason why he wasn't able to show?
No reason.
No? They just sent you?
Yes.
And Chima, are you been at Public Health for how long?
This, I think this is my third year.
Third year?
Yes.
Third year. Okay. So you're well versed on CDC requirements, things like that, correct?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
You're very well versed. And what is your position at Public Health?
I am the Tuberculosis and Hancin Disease Program Manager.
Okay, the manager.
Yeah. But for the response, I'm actually the Containment and Infection Control Lead that oversees isolation and quarantine.
So you were here in 2018 then, correct?
Yes.
Oh, you didn't see the election happen then? You didn't get a chance to see it? You're not even a registered voter, huh?
Right. They say I'm going to register.
Okay. You need to vote. You need to register, okay?
Yeah. I'm local now.
You've been here three years. That's enough. That almost makes you local, so...
Yeah, I'm local, right.
Okay. Okay. So anyways, you know, could... So since you've been the manager, you've been at Public Health for three years, you're very well versed on the CDC, you know, engagement, you know, what's been going on and certain rules that are being implemented and safety precautions, most especially on CDC. So I'm going to ask you a question. Do you think that if we had this primary election in four weeks from today, that the possibility of the virus could actually spread even more so? Even if we had safety precautions in place, but not everything is perfect, that we could see potential spread?
Okay. Going by Public Health containment strategy for the virus and the integrity of that particular strategy. I think what I can say at this point, you know, looking at our numbers, you know, like the last spike and how we are trying to flatten the curve. I think it's been able, like I said, you know, for us to sit back and look at those numbers and identify, you know, precisely what is going on based on those numbers, which the information is out there with the surveillance team. So having that information and also matching it with our testing program, in four weeks, we will be able to determine, you know, or have an estimation of what and where we're going to be. But right now, we can't answer... I can't answer the question of the curve without sitting down to look at that number with our team to make sure that whatever recommendation we're going to make would be realistic and be scientifically proven rather than making assumptions here right now.
Okay. So basically, just the unknown already is scary enough, right?
Yes.
Just the unknown.
Yes.
It could be a possibility, you know? So I just wanted to make that clear. And we all know that the spike in positives or those in testing positive is based on how many people are being tested.
Yes.
We saw that spike when we were testing, what, 800 people within the week? And then we saw, you know, the numbers going up. And the last, what, how many days now since we've had the last massive testing? It's almost been, what, today's Monday, Tuesday? I was going to say Thursday. I mean, the last time you had one was almost a week ago, correct?
Uh-huh.
And in that week, have we seen any... But would you say that if we started up again and had those mass testings in the villages, do you think those numbers will go up based on now and yesterday and the day before?
Okay. So like the strategy of using the mass testing at the same time, you know, during the contact investigation for identified cases, I cannot say of the curve right now, you know, if we are going to see those numbers. Because what has happened in the past, in the last one week is Public Health following up with the positive cases and testing their close contacts. And right now, the numbers that have been tested are actually coming out from those that were close contacts, so those cases, and then those that are in the Q-FAC. With the numbers coming down, that means we are actually rounding up, you know, making sure that all those who were identified as positives are followed up using the contact tracing, using the contact tracing to identify those who were actually exposed to them. If we keep doing the mass testing, there's always a chance that we're going to see numbers. But having more targeted testing from what we had from the last time would be more strategic for us and also give us a true idea of what is going on. Because when you do the mass testings for any disease, there's always a chance of getting those numbers that, you know, that maybe you couldn't have gotten if you didn't do the mass testing. But having that large amount of mass testing over time and coming up with those numbers and then seeing those numbers dip considering the fact that we're doing contact tracing and following up with testing right away, I think it's a clear indication that something is working positively, but we still can't... There's still the unknown about the virus.
But we're still not at that point where we can determine whether there's a positive happening. We're still not at that unless we have another mass testing, correct? Because you're already starting seeing numbers move, right, from all the testing that you mentioned?
Uh-huh.
So with that being said, unless we do another mass testing and to see if it's true to form that things are starting to go the positive is to determine that on the next mass testing. Because we had a massive, I mean, a big amount of positives that came into play, you know, and then from what I gather, none of those were affected from the 35 airmen that were out running around when they did their contact tracing. It was totally different, you know? So I'm just curious to see the next mass testing that would happen that would actually make me feel a lot better to see what you're talking about going, the slope going down and things getting positive.
I think with the virus and the message we need to send out there is the virus is not a lifestyle disease. It is an airborne disease, which is an equal opportunities disease. Anybody can be exposed to the virus by just being close to someone who has the virus. So it amounts to personal responsibility on our own side, you know, following the guidelines from CDC and Guam Public Health to do the few things that we need to do as individuals to cut off transmission. And if we keep following those recommendations from CDC and then continue with the testings and aggressive contact investigation like Public Health is doing right now, I think we can actually force the numbers down. But the challenge would be keeping it down. Because people get more complacent and more comfortable when they find out that, you know, the virus or they think that the virus is out of the window and then we can make a mistake and then the spike will come up again.
Kind of like what's happening in California right now and the other states and how the United States is all of a sudden it's rising. And what is that, do you think that's attributed to the rise of numbers in a state?
Yeah. I think it goes to what I just said, you know, about personal responsibilities. Because at some point, Public Health will not be able to do it alone. The individuals have to get involved. Because what happens in situations like this is that Public Health usually is the last to know. Because for...
Well, they're shutting down like restaurants now. They're shutting down all these other places that they had opened up now. I guess the responsibility now is like the government is taking control on that responsibility and shutting all these places down.
Yeah.
So, you know, and it's for their own good, for their own safety issues on that. So, anyway, I'm sorry to just wanted to put that in there because, you know, sometimes it takes, you know, us to put certain rules and regulations in place to lessen the curve. But, you know, I know they want me to hurry up, so I'm just going to go through a couple of the things. So you mentioned planning. I brought that out to the Guam Election Commission to not only just tell us that they're going to do six feet and tell us that they're going to, you know, have only 25 people in an area, but to actually do hard copy of the plan itself and how each precinct is going to address the safety concerns. So I'm happy to hear that, you know, if you can take that back to your director and let them know that we look forward to that. The drive-by voting, you know, trying to emulate the same kind of thing with mass testing that they're doing on the drive-by. But we know that if I'm not mistaken, from six to eight people to do a drive-by may take an hour for just 68 people. And, you know, we have about 55,000 registered voters. But I too, I agree with that. If we were to have a primary, that would at least be the option for the older people, those who are most vulnerable, you know, into that drive-by. So the exposure to precinct officials, you know, there's a stipend that's given to individuals who volunteer that day to be there. And their exposure is, would be quite high, especially if they have to meet everybody, look at their ID card and those coming in. You're getting hundreds of people coming in. So would their exposure be, I mean, for that individual, they would really need to be geared up like how those who are geared up on the testing when you go through and get the swab up your nose, the nurse or the someone that's there all fully clothed and stuff like that? Do you think that these precinct officials should do that too?
No.
No?
So what we can do is address each individual risk level for every part of the election. So like when you walk into the shops, you have the engineering controls in place. You have the plexiglasses up there where is an engineering barrier, like the speed guard. So if you have a speed guard up and then you have the individual who is the election officer behind the speed guard, who is wearing a face covering and maybe has a glove, a glove to look at the ID card and pass it out to them.
Hmm.
It's just limiting the, the amount of time and amount of contact with that individual. And a lot of this can be handled, like, like, like if you go to the airport where we have staff who are at frontline receiving the passengers coming from off island, you, you, you understand the phases in infection control. So you're looking at who has the closest contact to the individual and then what role. So the, the role of, the, the amount of PPE that is needed by someone who's making a direct contact to a patient will be, will be more than for the person who is just taking paperwork from the individual.
I see.
Behind a plexiglass. So that's why I said it is good for us to understand the process and then go through each section and look at and, and do a risk assessment for each of those sections to identify what risk that will be involved and then what mitigation that can be applied for that risk level.
I see. Okay. Well, thank you so much, Chima. It was nice meeting you and, and hearing what you have to say, but I think at the beginning when we established that, you know, um, the, the scary part is the unknown.
Yes.
You know, and the unknown of, of whether we have this primary that, that, that the virus gets spread even more and people get infected even more by having it within the next four weeks. It's just that scary part of unknown. So I appreciate you being here and thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Chair as well. Thank you, Chima.
Thank you so much.
Be safe, wash your hands.
Thank you.
Sir, sir, your, 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 your name is Chima?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let me ask you some questions now.
Mr. Chair, could I correct? I've made a mistake. Not four weeks, six weeks, Mr. Chima.
Okay, six weeks.
Six weeks? Yeah, that's the election. Okay. Mr. Chima?
Yes, sir.
You're aware of your chief, uh, epidemiologist, Dr. Ogden?
Dr. Ogden.
Is, would, would that, is, that's at Public Health. You know Dr. Ogden, right? But what's his, uh, position?
Annette, I think he's-
Annette, Annette Ogden. Yeah, she's a BCDC administrator for Public Health.
Okay, she, she's the one that, that, um, just to let you know, if you're not aware of it, that's who the Guam Election Commission coordinates with, with the, uh, the governors, COVID physician, Dr. Cruz and CDC when they coordinate for the election.
Okay.
Okay, so, so you know.
Yes.
Number one, I got a simple question. You see how, uh, Home Depot, because I'm a frequent flyer there, how the traffic is there? You've been to Home Depot, right?
Yes.
You see how they're set up where it's every six feet, let a customer go in, they got the mask on, they got the sanitizer and everything going in, right?
Hmm.
Have you ever participated in any election here in Guam?
No, sir.
There's not as much traffic as you find at Home Depot today. Okay? Let me just let you know that. The election does not have a crowd that roams the election pole. You go in there for a purpose, you sign up, you vote, you walk out. You're not there like you're doing at Home Depot or if you're going to Payless or any other retail store where you're looking for goods. You're there just for the purpose. So I'm just trying to be very careful on, on how we try to describe, because I like how you're describing it. It's a matter of how they control and how they maintain the distance, you know, and the social, uh, hand washing and, and the masking, everything. But I just want to make sure that was very clear and understood.
Uh huh.
But other than that, um, thank you for your presentation and, uh, I think that, that this would, would this would end your presentation, sir.
All right. Thank you so much.
And you have a nice day and, um, my colleagues, this would end the, uh, the hearing on, uh, Bill three seventy-four and three seventy-five. And I'd ask that, um, the committee will continue to receive testimony and please address your in testimony to Committee on General Government Operation Appropriative Housing and submit it via email to Senator Joe S. Augustine at gmail dot com. And since you're as modesty for attendance, participate in today's hearing. Now, we're gonna go to the next bill. What was that?
Oh.
We still have another bill, my colleagues. So thank you, Mr. Chima. Go ahead, go ahead, you can provide the information.
Mr. Chair, have we have asked Public Health for formal testimony also?
I beg your pardon?
Have, have you asked Public Health for formal testimony also?
Well, um, we, 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 we can ask for that, um, if Mr. Chima can provide the formal testimony. If anything, ask Dr. Ogden, that's from Public Health. I think she's, is she in your line of, uh?
Yes.
Okay. Work with the doctor and ask her what is the process she presented to the Guam Election Commission on how they manage the election.
Okay.
That we need to get, okay? If you could, I really appreciate that. And I'll have my staff also ca- contact the doctor so we can get that information, so we can show the relationship on how the election is being processed, what's the communication? Because I know Senator Teller thought about how the plan is, how they're setting up, how they're protecting everybody when they're doing the election and how it's being worked out right now throughout the community. Okay?
All right, sir.
All right? Um, that being said, um, it is now three twenty. This ends the three seventy-four and three seventy-five. We will now, uh, proceed on to Bill two five four. Two five four is an act introduced by Senator James Moylan, an act to add section one 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 two point one to chapter one and to men, section one 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 three and one 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 four of chapter one, section seven one oh five A of chapter seven, and section one five one oh five, one five one oh eight, one five three oh one, and section one five four oh four of Guam, of chapter fifteen of all of Title III, Guam Code Anton, read the election law, laws pursuant to any person seeking to run for partisan elected office as an independent candidate. Senator Moylan, would you like to give an opening statement to your bill? Sir, and we do have one, uh, Mr. Dominic Hernandez that would be testifying, but we'll have Senator Moylan first introduce his bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we know and we've heard on earlier testimonies, there are many challenges for those entering the race for an elected office, especially for those who may choose to be an independent candidate, uh, which is defined basically as a not affiliated with any particular party. It is even extremely more difficult when they choose to do so. So presently, to be an independent candidate requires the same organizational requirements expected of existing parties, which are first, to be eligible for a general election ballot placement, the independent column must receive a minimum of twenty percent of the total combined votes cast for the winning teams seeking partisan nomination. And two, the independent candidate must receive at least ten percent of the total number of valid ballots cast for the office sought. So what this measure seeks to do is to allow those independent candidates who successfully complete the Guam Election Commission filing requirements to be placed on the ballot without the restrictions of forming another political party. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I look forward to public testimony and, uh, moving this bill forward through committee. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dominic Hernandez, welcome back.
Off the day.
And you're here to testify for two five four, please.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, like Senator Moylan had stated, uh, with running as an independent, especially in the elections with the way the laws are written, it is, uh, rather difficult. I did look into it, um, as in the beginning, I looked into all parties just to see and verify how things are done, how the elections are done here in Guam, which I admit is very different from the US itself, especially when it comes to independent candidates. And from my own personal view, it's unfair to those that do not want to choose a party. Uh, they should have the opportunity and ability to go ahead and run as an independent. And as a candidate myself, um, I believe that if a person wants to run, they should be running for the people or behalf of the people. So to have to choose a party because of the way the law is created, it kind of leans toward unfairness. And as well, if you notice in the two thousand eighteen election with, uh, the write-in, uh, there was twenty-two point eight percent of the votes that were write-ins. Uh, roughly a little over eight thousand people had wrote in for, uh, at the time, Senator Frank Ogden to be elected as a governor during that election. Uh, with that twenty-two point eight percent, uh, to me, that states that there are actually a lot of people out there who are interested in the idea of having independent individuals running on their own versus running with a party itself. Uh, overall, I, I support the bill and I would love to see some amendments done to hopefully give the chance for future candidates who would just like to run as independents and don't feel obligated and/or feel like they're, don't have a choice but to run in a party. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Ms., Mr. Hernandez. And, uh, you know, I kind of agree with you to a certain extent, but when we were talking about what happened on the last election.
Hmm.
Uh, my former colleague, cousin of mine, Frank Ogden, he ran as a Democrat governor. He ran as a write-in, but not necessarily as non, someone that's not affiliated to a party. He's, he's a longstanding Democrat, okay? So, no, I understand where you come from. I, I'm, I'm well aware of, there are many of us, I, I include myself.
Hmm.
That are not necessarily strongly affiliated to the party as what a lot of people would think, and I understand. But, uh, and I agree with this bill. I've, I've thought about this on many occasions, trying to figure out a way how to get independents to more com- compete in the election. Okay? So, so, uh, I'll work with Senator Moylan, we'll figure out how we can get this bill through and figure out how we can get it in somewhere, somehow, because there are many out there that, that, that would, would like to do that. Go independent, but they're be affiliated with a party, there's no doubt.
Yes, sir.
Everybody's affiliated to something here in Guam. This is one hundred and sixty thousand people. Senator Moylan, do you have any questions for Mr. Hernandez?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hernandez, you mentioned possible, uh, amendments to the bill. Do you have something you wish to share with us? Please feel free to.
Um, well, as you, uh, had stated earlier, that an individual would have to at least have ten percent of the total votes just to be able to be, uh, considered. And, uh, believe at least maybe possibly, uh, lowering the number, maybe to a more uh, reasonable amount as in five percent, six percent, seven percent, something along those lines to where it's more easier for them, especially in the sense that they're running on their own versus running with a party. Because with a party, you have the party support, uh, so as an example, as running as a Republican, those that are Republican that automatically see my name associated Republican, chances are they might go ahead and vote for me. Versus an individual who's an independent won't have that association. So being able to lower the percentages to help them try to get in and make it a little bit more, I guess you'd say fair for them to, uh, be able to be, get accepted would be, uh, something I would look forward to seeing being amended.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your testimony and your research. Uh, it was very helpful. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Theresa Lai, do you have any questions of Mr. Hernandez?
Yes, um, there's a part of this bill that would, that proposes that an independent candidate can be put, or a team, independent team, can be put on the general election ballot for governor without having placed in the primary. Uh, I don't know, that seems like, um, a bigger burden on those in parties after that, you know? It says, because it's striking out a provision of law that currently says, no Imaga Lahin Guahan and Isaguda Nama Gali team running in the independent column shall be eligible for general election ballot placement unless such team receives a minimum twenty percent of the total combined votes cast for the winning teams seeking partisan nomination. Um, yeah, so it just make, it, it looks like from this bill, they wouldn't have to go through a primary, but all, everybody else would? I, I don't know, I would think, uh, that would make it easier? Not sure. What do you think?
Well, I mean, don't get me wrong, ma'am, of course, we have to have some kind of regulation in place, especially try to make it fair for those that are running in a party. So, uh, by all means, I am for that, to make it fair, especially with the fact that, like you said, they don't have to do a primary. Um, on the same note, uh, I was just researching online earlier, um, where it's saying that, it was saying that they have to, where am I at? Uh, that which they may have a place on the ballot and have the names of its candidates identified there with the party's name or other official designation, provided however that the party's name and its candidate shall not be placed on the ballot as directed until the party has qualified as a recognized political party by polling in a general election. And as an independent, you're running on your own. So it's, it's a bit, it's a bit complicated to understanding and I'm, and understand, ma'am, I'm, I'm trying to understand this as any normal, ordinary person would if they decided one day, I, you know, I'm just gonna get up and run and try this out. And reading it, it, it's almost trying to make it sound like being an independent has to be a party when the definition of independent is exactly that, on your own. So maybe getting some wording better so that we can clarify, uh, the difference between actually having a party and being independent and maybe, uh, as I said, to amend certain regulations so that even though independents don't have to do a primary, but they have to meet a certain requirement in order to, uh, continue on to the, uh, general elections and or to be elected.
All right. Well, I appreciate it and yeah, I, I understand where, yeah, we are trying to just, uh, open up our elections, the more candidates, the better.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the more variety of ish, uh, input we can have in our government, I think, the better. But, um, yeah, I think, uh, for me, I have to give it more thought because I, I, I also don't want to make it extremely easy for, you know, somebody to declare they're an independent, get on a general election ballot while everybody else has to kind of battle it out in the primaries or, you know, uh, meet other requirements, you know, to, to be members of political parties. But I'll, I will give it thought. But I do appreciate, yeah, that, um-
Agreed, ma'am. And if anything, ma'am, um, I mean, just as a suggestion, since the parties do have to do a primary themselves.
Yes.
Uh, even though people are running as independents, let's say you do end up getting twenty independents as an example, running.
Yes. What if you had, yeah, what if you had twenty?
Yeah, I believe that, you know, we should place a law as well for them to do a primary to top a certain amount, depending on, of course, the amount that you're allowing to go to the general election. Let's just go with the current thirty right now. So it comes down to, I guess you could say ten, 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 or however you decide to divide it as best ways as you can. Um, generally speaking, most independent parties don't have that many individuals running as independents. So I'm thinking there would be probably more on the lower end. If anything else, that's even basing it upon what's going on in the US with independents running. Um, but that's something we, you know, I would like to see, uh, researched and thought about and maybe, uh, try to create something so that it is fair.
Yes.
Because it has to be fair between all parties, including the independents.
Yes. I want to thank you again for taking the time and effort to come down here and testify on this and their bills earlier today. And so, Sisus Masi, and good luck to you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Senator, uh, Teller, do you have any questions, ma'am?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Chair, thank you for the opportunity. Off the day Dominic Hernandez, number one on the ballot, Republican side. You know, Dominic, I, I, I think, you know, just reading some of, uh, your messages on Facebook and, and social media, you know, um, I'm pretty sure if the opportunity to be an independent, you'd have probably have been an independent, but I just really glad you became a Republican on that. But to tell you the truth, there's like, like my family, my, my mother was a Republican, my father was a Democrat. And when I wanted to run, I actually wanted to go as an independent, but of course, the obstacles there for someone wanting to be an independent is, is truly doesn't give you that, that opportunity. And I think that's what this bill does. It, it, uh, it, it definitely needs a lot more research, like you said earlier, I appreciate that and, and recognizing that it does need some work on. And I'm, I'm looking forward to working with the, uh, the author of the bill to try and, um, you know, clean up certain areas that, that makes what he calls an equal playing field. And I think that, that would mean, you know, on all parties, you know, and, and independents to have that equal playing field. Um, so, uh, I thank you for being here again all day as well and being part of the system and, uh, your first time at the legislature, testifying early this morning, and now this is your second, so now you're, you're used to it now.
A lot more comfortable.
We hope to see you, and hope to see you soon again on, on even, uh, additional legislation that should come up. Dominic, you have a wealth of knowledge and definitely you have the heartbeat of, uh, the local community who provides input on your, on your social media. I greatly appreciate that and bringing their voices here to the legislature like you did this morning of all those people on your Facebook. That's the first part of public service and, and you've shown that today by bringing their voices here to the legislature. Thank you so much, Dominic.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, and I will say as well, um, uh, some of the stuff I post, I may, I know it may seem like it's, uh, independent, but without a doubt, I definitely, once I stick with a party, I stick with it. And it came, like I said at the very beginning, it came as a thought, um, just because I was researching all parties, trying to figure out what's what and how it's done. Uh, but the one thing I did want to point out though is more often than not, especially when I went around asking people about, uh, why nobody does run as an independent, the most common theme I heard from people was it's political suicide. And that's unfortunate. It's very unfortunate because I believe- It's very unfortunate because I believe that, you know, if you want to run as an independent, you should have at least some kind of fair advantage, not advantage, but fair grounds to be able to run. And so when I hear people say that, that independents don't really have a chance, you know, despite the fact being a Republican, I do want to see them have that opportunity. And I do want to also, I would love to see the diversity and the challenge as well, having individuals from a different aspect and a different thinking coming through and especially when we're discussing different matters and different bills, they have their own perspective on things and sometimes it's good to hear that perspective. So I definitely look forward and hopefully we're able to figure out a way to make this happen for them.
Sisus Massey, thank you again, Dominic. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Tello. Dominic, I only have a few comments to make. You mentioned 10, 10, 10 on the ballot. Let's not forget that on the, when they list the 15 senators, candidates for the Democrat and Republican, even if you have two independent on that list, top vote getters, it doesn't matter where you're from, all three columns, okay? So let's make sure we have that understanding. There's no 10, 10, 10. There's 15 positions in the legislature. So if you get one or two or three or four or five, whatever number is independent and they get the top vote, guess they get in.
Understood, sir. That was just as an example.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure that we have that understood very clear. And there will be some scrubbing of this bill. I just reached over and talked to Senator Moynihan. We'll be looking over it with my colleagues. That being said, thank you for your testimony today.
Thank you, sir.
We really appreciate you all day.
Yes, sir.
Welcome to the Guam Legislature, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, colleagues, for your question. The committee will conclude this public hearing with Bill 254-35COR. Committee will continue to receive testimony. Please address your written testimony to the Committee on General Government Operation Appropriately Housing and submit it via email to Senator Joe S. Augustine at gmail dot com. Sisus Massey for attendance and participate in today's hearing. And for those at home, thank you for watching. The public hearing for Bill 254-35, sponsored by Senator James Moynihan, is now adjourned. It is now 3:37. And have a nice day, sir. Take care.